All right, here we go. Holding the order, salute to the flag, please.
Let me use the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one empire, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hold on, please. Mr. Boat?
Eric.
Mrs. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Barronella? Mr. Jean Akis? Here. Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Finesi?
Here.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Here.
Mr. Cassio?
Yep.
Mr. Chapman? Here. In accordance with the terms of the Sunshine Law, I would notice this meeting was posted in all school buildings, the administration building, the Borough Clerk's office, police headquarters, public library, porn newspapers, and tapped into on January 7th, 2021. Please be advised, there is no smoking on school grounds inside or out at any time. Please silence all electronic devices in pursuit of additional policy 0167. Each statement made by participants shall be limited to three minutes duration, and no participants shall speak more than once on the same topic. Under agendas, agenda additions or deletions, I'm going to administratively remove under Finance, number 17. Just looking to get some more data on this before we do this.
Mr. Chapman, what page is that?
I'm sorry?
What's eight?
Uh, 15.
Page 15.
Any other agenda additions or deletions? Seeing none, moving along to comments from the public on any of the proposed resolutions for this evening. All right, seeing none, moving on. Resolution will prove prior ordinance.
Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion.
This is what?
Yes, on the regular public meetings on October 13th, in the minutes, it shows that I voted no. I gave a statement as to why I voted no. Now, for me, that statement again, for those who didn't understand what my statement was. HIB number 222488, HIB. I went into the administrative offices yesterday to the Assistant Superintendent and read the actual HIBs. And I am voting no on one of the founded because it is my opinion that this was a conflict between two students.
Thank you. The other discussion? Hold on, please. Mr. Boat?
Yes.
Mrs. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Jean Akis?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Finesi?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mr. Cassio?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman? Yes. Moving on, superintendent's report, I wish I could see.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. This evening, we would like to acknowledge and praise one of our students for their amazing accomplishments. The board wishes to recognize that he, Art Patel, who was named a commended student in the 2022 National Merit Scholarship Program. So, we'd like to... If you just want to just bring over our people in the audience this evening, if you just wouldn't mind turning to the two monitors on the wall. This evening, we'll be having the pleasure of seeing a presentation from Riley School. We are going to highlight their Career Day and talk about the wonderful things that are going on at Riley. I actually just received an update from the New Jersey Department of Education. And listed on the bottom was our article about our Career Day at Riley School. So, when you're ready.
Welcome to Riley School. My name is Rose Valeriso, and I'm the principal here at Riley School. And I am so happy that you're here because it's always a beautiful day at Riley School. I want to share with all of you that we promote a positive environment in this school, positive climate, where everyone is welcomed, everyone is taken care of, and we definitely support character education. And I would like to show you what we mean by that. So, today, November 9th, we're promoting Career Day. And so, we have different visitors of different professions coming to school today. And what we try to do is when we promote Career Day or any topic, but particularly today, we also have classrooms doing activities and where they write about what they would like to be when they grow up. So, we tie in the academics with whatever topic we are promoting. And that's what we do here at Riley School. Putting together the climate, this positive climate, support for the students, the staff, and creating an environment of growth, both academically and socially.
All right, so what's your name?
Haley.
Haley, okay. And what do you want to be when you grow up?
A vet.
A vet? I wanted to be a vet. Why do you want to be a vet?
I like animals.
You like animals? Do you have any dogs, pets?
I have three dogs.
Three dogs? What are their names?
Maverick, Bennett, and Bella.
What type of dogs are they?
Pipples.
Pipples? Wow, must have thought piples. That's fun. Thank you so much. What do you want to be when you grow up?
A nurse.
A nurse? Why do you want to be a nurse?
Because, so, I'm actually not a real nurse. I'm actually a nurse that'll take care of babies who are hurt or just need a checkup.
That's nice. Thank you so much. So, what's your name?
Carter.
Carter. And what do you want to be when you grow up?
Uh, I want to be astronaut.
An astronaut? That's fun. Why do you want to be an astronaut?
Because I'm really good at math.
Math? Wow, I'm good at math, too. Anything else you like?
Uh, my dad's a police. I kind of want to be police, too.
You want to be police, too? Your dad's a police? That's fun. Thank you so much. Very good.
As I was saying to you, at Riley School, we definitely promote character education, where we celebrate each mom a specific character trait that we focus on with lessons. And we talk about it in my morning message, as well as we promote it throughout the entire month. So, then, we get the students. Each teacher selects a student for student of the month. And for that character trait, they get a beautiful certificate. We take their picture, like you see here, and we celebrate them. They also receive a gift card from me. And it's just a wonderful way to promote character education. Now, the students have asked us, if this was an initiative by them, that we should also have Staff of the Month. So, here we are. If you look on this board, we have Staff of the Month. These are the staff members selected by the students for the Staff of the Month, who also show the characteristic or the character trait of the month. In addition, we also promote the be kind. So, every single time a student does something kind for someone, we give them a B. We put their entire name on it. Children love to walk through the corridors and see their names. And we are promoting again for children to be kind and doing acts of kindness throughout the entire school year.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Mrs. Valeriso and all of the faculty and staff at Riley School, as well as all of the community members who participated in Career Day. It's wonderful to see how many different career opportunities there are out there for our students. And it really shows how involved the community is, that they gave their time to come in and do this. I'd also like to let the public know that last week, the board was informed. We received a letter from the New Jersey Department of Education that the department has allowed us and the commission has approved Mrs. Valeriso to remain in our school district until the end of the school year. So, Mrs. Valeriso, this time has been extended until June 30th. So, we're happy to have Mrs. Valeriso. Couple of other things that are going on in the district. Yesterday, we held a parent meeting. We had a few hundred people in attendance, and there were a lot of questions. We went over the COVID protocol, as well as Star Strong information. That presentation is listed on our website. So, if you have some time, go ahead and take a look at it. It talks about the COVID protocol and vaccine information now that all students from grade age five up can receive a vaccination. So, we wanted to make sure that all of our parents were aware of what the protocol was and what happens when you're taking your child to be vaccinated. I've also was asked a number of times about what it would look like in terms of having some time off because of the Thanksgiving holiday coming up or the winter break. Last year, we did have the schools close during that time. It doesn't look like that's going to be necessary. We were keeping our eyes on what our numbers look like in terms of cases in the schools. But right now, we are not anticipating having to make any closures in any conversations that we have with the Moses County Health Department would help us make any decisions there. But right now, it doesn't look like that's going to have to happen. We also talked about our holiday shows. Our holiday shows are back in person. So, parents and guardians and friends and whatnot are going to be invited to the holiday shows. We do have a limit to the amount of people that'll actually be able to attend the show. So, please be aware that your building principals will be sending out information on what it's going to look like for your particular building. I know that in some cases, some of the holiday programs are being brought to larger venues. So, for example, grant holiday program will be sent up here to the high school to allow for more people to come and watch. We are also still taking orders. Tomorrow is the last day. If you have any interest in buying five of Thanksgiving sale form type reforms, we have reached over 200 pies that are going to be picked up next week. So, if you are interested, please make sure you visit the website so that you can order your pie. You only have until tomorrow at 3:00 p.m. I also just wanted to mention, if you had the opportunity to visit the website, if you happen to be on Facebook, if you are on our YouTube channel, I'd just like you to be aware that all of the programs that are being produced are being produced through our broadcasting program. And our students are acting as anchors. They're doing all the editing. So, I just want to thank all of those students. And you, Mr. Cassio, I know you have a very busy month next month as you go around and videotape all the holiday shows. But I just wanted to let you know that our broadcasting class is doing an amazing job. And please take the time to view their work. And you'll see some of the wonderful things that are happening. If you happen to catch tomorrow's Community Connection Show, I think it'll be up on Monday. You will see our chef from our culinary program along with a couple of our students show you how to make some wonderful desserts for Thanksgiving. So, these are all the great things we have going on here in our school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lyscheff. Great job. Excuse me, Riley School. That was fantastic. I still remember doing the Career Day. Frankly, my neighbor was in there. And I had a suit on, and a kid came looking. He said to me, "Are you a game show host?" I said, "No, but that would be pretty cool." I can come to a comedy game show. It's hilarious. Always a good time. So, it's fun. And thanks to all the community members who donated their talk to go over Riley and do that with the kids. That was really nice. All right, so moving along here. The, we've got to have the district and board goals for the year. And we all have a copy of these in front of us here. So, the first one that I'd like to go over is the board goals. And personally, they're not numbered, so I just went down and numbered them on my sheet here. And I personally like goals one, four, six, and seven. And we'll do discussion on this. How did it work?
Yeah.
Oh, the first one? And the third one? Yeah. And then, I would each separate it out. I guess I just numbered them down. So, and the goals are next to...
Mr. Chapman, many of these here, we said one is the one for student recognition. So, if the student recognizes one, the next one, I'm sorry, you asked was four?
Yeah.
Will engage the district stakeholders in planning infrastructure on the district website?
Right. Did someone say? I had the goals put next to South Maplewood Education to Ulster Security Awareness. And then, the last one with this support participation of local government. We have all of that. I agree with you on six and seven. But I feel that we already do one. So, I currently five, five, six, and seven. So, I would like to go over it with you. Any other?
Mr. Chapman?
Up, swivel.
For number seven, for the energy line, are we going to have somebody come in and go through the buildings and the, all the different facilities to do the water and on our own vehicles?
I'm sorry, what did you say? The other?
Are we going to have the orders, not the orderers, but the energy orders, come in and go through every building to what we have? What we have also including our own vehicles, our corporate owned vehicles?
Oh, our vehicles?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sure it's there.
Yeah.
No, that's not part of the energy line, the vehicles?
Well, they... Are you sure it's not the vehicles as far as gas and the efficiency of the vehicles? They do that for the borough?
Yeah, I'm 100% sure. I don't believe it is. But I think we have to double check. But I think Alice said it's not really right. You know, more of like lights, LED lights, maybe AC, all the capital. Right. And it's great colors, though. There's no cost associated.
No, I know there's no cost.
Any other? All right, so, the only other one that we had in addition to the ones I had suggested that we do is number five. So, I guess... So, we're going to vote on... Couldn't find the six being invited in some way? Phil, could you take your mask off while you're talking? Couldn't find the six being invited in some way? And the cybersecurity department, safety and security of student, faculty, and staff?
I think they're two different things.
John, you think they're two separate things?
I think they're two separate things. I mean, we're talking about, we're talking about really digital citizenship and also our infrastructure in terms of that aspect of our school. This other goal here, safety and security of students is updating the public address system. Whole different kind of thing.
Yeah, you know, my dear, you're right. They are.
I agree.
I think, I mean, honestly, if we focused on cybersecurity and digital citizenship and awareness, that's a major space that we should probably really focus on. And it's very timely and it's...
Yeah, I agree with you also because I do believe that five was really, you know, taking care of foreign referendum in, you know, in instances. Didn't we get the little rants, too, as well? They take care of some of that stuff, right?
We did, but specifically for the public address system, we do not have a brain to do that.
Right.
I also don't want to give the impression that we do not have a functioning public address system. We do have a functioning public address system, but it is antiquated.
Right. You did help the emergency response service as well.
Yes.
You did that.
Yes.
Yeah. And I think as we're, you know, we're sitting here and we're discussing it, I agree with Mrs. Jean Akis in that number one is we already do it. It's part of what we do. I don't think that, I think that's a total gimme if we take that. So, I think I'd like to, you know, say, you know, the four, six, and seven. Okay, so I would like to make a motion that we select goals four, six, and seven as the board education goals for... Any suggestions? And they'll all be posted. All right, moving along. We got a roll call, sorry. Or first, any suggestions? Hold on. Mr. Boat?
Yes.
Mrs. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Barronella?
Yes.
Mr. Jean Akis?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Finesi?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mr. Cassio?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman? Yes. Moving along to district goals. Again, with them, I numbered in the same fashion. And I'll throw it out there first. As my selections are one, three, and five. One being South Maplewood School District will work in partnership with the outside agencies. Three is South Maplewood School District will continue review of the effectiveness of block scheduling in high school. And five is South Maplewood School District will create and meet the needs of district students related to mental health.
Yeah, I would like to throw out there that we look at during the South Maplewood School District to identify the students who experience learning loss because of COVID to develop and implement a plan that includes focus remediation, differentiation, instruction, and so on. Because I think that's really key. Whereas the board here and as a district as a whole have not really, do not really have a plan out there for the community that we're really taking care of the learning loss. I think that's something that the community is very concerned about. And I think we should make that as one more district goal. As well as reviewing our strategic plan. We are now in year three of strategic plan that really has become outdated because of the whole COVID situation. So, our strategic plan really needs to be reevaluated, rewritten, things added in, things taken out, possibly even redoing some of our dates because I don't know that we can meet everything on there in the next two years. So, I think that those two, you know, are extremely important, especially the learning gap. I think we would be remiss as a board if we do not somehow have something for our learning gaps, either in board goals or in district goals.
Okay, that's valid. On the mind thought process on the strategic plan is that should be more of an administrative exercise than a complete, than rather than a complete, you know, redo of the way we did it the last time with the community members and all that. I think the new strategy, we should take a look at it and, you know, come back with a report on whatever you are, on what you have to look at. So, I think that's a, an official goal, my view.
Chapman? Are you saying that, here, that we would not involve the stakeholders in the process of the plan as we always have done three years?
Well, what I'm saying is that, yes, we've always done it. At any time that we designed a new strategic plan, we did involve stakeholders. And this is a strategic plan that's in place right now. What I think is we need an administrative review of it to see for them to evaluate and let us know where they stand in the feasibility of accomplishing the objectives that were in the strategic plan. I don't think that it's, at this point in time, without knowing all that information, I don't think that it's appropriate to pull in all the stakeholders and get everybody in and start to rework the strategic plan without administrative development where this, where the current plan stands.
Okay, and I also have a question on the learning loss. Can you also, can we also include the part about expand course offerings for our students who will be in general workforce they are not in school? To make that a part of the goal, part of learning loss?
Sure.
You know, we did need to review the information that was sent us. It was spoiled. The issue here is we're late in approving these goals. So, normally, we would have discussed this in July. It's very hard for, obviously, it's nearly impossible for us to try to put new courses in place in November for the end of the school year. That would be something that if we wanted to do that, we would do it in July. And then, we would have, actually, we probably talked back in May. And then, we would approve it for the start for July. But in November, it'd be very difficult. There'd be no thought to add in a brand new course. All right, I understand that. But it's '21, '22. So, for the 22, the beginning of the '22 school year, could that be the '22, '23 school year? You're in the '21, '22 school year. Okay, well, September is still '22 coming up. So, I thought you could add in... No, your goals are for this year. You're making goals. They're late. So, you're making goals for the '21, '22 school year. It would be nearly, it would be impossible for us to try to put in a new course for our graduates now. We do have things in place that's actually called a course and have it approved as we move forward. I think it's obviously something that we need to consider. It would be something that we would talk about through curriculum council, have it brought to the board for May for your approval of the budget, and then have it put in place for July. Okay, and we're discussing all this now. We were handed a piece of paper from last meeting. And Mr. Chapman also asked those of us who did submit goals to resend them.
They were resend?
Yes, yes.
Right, and you resend all the board members? So... I mean, you just weren't given this now. They were resend on Friday?
No, I didn't say that we're just giving this now.
Yes, you did.
At the last meeting, we were giving.
Okay.
We were giving the paper.
Right, okay. Mr. Finesi?
Yeah, I'll agree with, I think the block schedule is important to keep that in there. That's new. It's, you know, the effectiveness of it. We definitely, definitely need to get that information this year. And whether to expand it, to include some labs, and to concern something at the beginning on the block schedule. I'm good with the, with mental health. And I'm good with also identifying students because I think we're doing that already. That, I think, would be less, less, I guess, than Mary and Loreen actually went over that with all the parents as far as the testing and finding where all students are. So, we are doing that, too. So, I'll put a dozen right now.
Mrs. Miller?
Yeah, regarding the block scheduling though, pardon the wrong, but isn't that through our superintendent's? So that's going to be done anyway. That's going to be handled through her, her actual, your local. Yes. You're right. I mean, so maybe we should pick something else because we know that's going to be handled, that's going to be addressed.
Can I make a comment about the block schedule? The issue with the block schedule from the board's perspective, the issue with the block schedule from the board's perspective is resources for the high school. And what do I mean by that? We added another period of the day to the high school. That requires staffing. And the issue that the board would be in a position, the administrative review in terms of the academic pieces would be a piece for the superintendent and the administration to review. In terms of the board, a schedule that's been expanded requires financial resources that the board would be in a position to be talking about and planning for so that the high school could be adequately staffed to fill an additional period in the school day. That's a different aspect of the board. So I would, I would all of that out there. We're going to move in that direction, we're talking about it. It's a different task than one where the superintendent is evaluating in terms of academic performance toward the exist.
You know, there's so many on here that are so, you know, that are so good with the, you know, rescue recovery plan that's on here as well is, you know, is excellent. And I think that the social portion definitely should be part of the board as well.
I would also like to suggest, I like the social and emotional part as well, but I'd like to kind of add one of the other ones in there where we will continue to provide social, emotional learning and educational program for the students to address their overall living and mental health, but that we make sure that programming will be secured and planned so that there's continuing and extension beyond all of the funding that we're currently receiving. I'd like to take that one and also add it onto the mental health.
Okay, so which one?
I don't know which one.
You just threw it out there, let us figure it out.
Yeah, okay, so it would be under the red, where we have all the red, I guess it's number, wait, I don't know what's in here. It would be number one.
Yeah.
In the red. If we could add that too, I guess it's number five.
Yeah. The handkerchief. Okay, so. Okay, yeah, so combine five and then, and then.
Number one.
Hold one, they're in the red there.
Yeah. We, both of these things are achievable. Sharon, in that particular case, what we're talking about, that we'd be able to implement something and have it continue. No matter what program we want to implement, the idea is that it will continue. At this point, we can give the funding. We can, you can approve them now as a goal in the 2021 school year. But in 2023, 24, if we lose funding, there's no way to assure that the program will continue. So, I mean, to say that you, that you want to implement the program, obviously, is the responsible thing to do as a board. It's great, social, emotional, and also tied with epidemics. They have, they have provided funding for us that we can spend over the next two and a half years. But at some point, that may not continue. And then I would just need to work with the board to, you know, to realize some of our funders at that point. So I think you, I think it's okay to put that statement in there, but I think it's not realistic because you're offering, you're offering this whole this year that quite frankly, we have no idea what it's worth. Right, we have no idea.
Well, we can always, when is funding actually going to end?
Right now, they've given us funding that says whatever money that they've given us and whatever chance it keeps coming in, they told us we have the next two and a half years to spend it. So realistically, we can say we can continue this for the next two and a half years. It doesn't mean that in a year and a half from now, they'll say, we're going to offer you more money. But they might say it's completely dried up and we've put in so many other, you know, so many programs.
Yeah, I mean, I would hope we would be able to, that we would arrange our finances. I guess it's actually what I'm saying, that we look ahead, that we now take a look at our finances. Maybe we need to redo a few things so that in two and a half years from now. I think this mental health program is really important. I think it should be sustainable. I think we should be still doing it three or four years from now. And I think we will be remiss as a board if we didn't start looking at it now and saying, look, we have all this money now, let's use it wisely so that we will in year three and year four still be able to sustain a mental health program like this if this funding were to run out. Rather than sit there and say, okay, well, we've got all this money now, let's keep, you know.
Sharon, I have to, I have to commend, quite frankly, the board and the support they do in the district because this happened, this pandemic happened, and we are very fortunate and happy to receive the extra funding that the state is giving us. But you, as a board, had supported the hiring of guidance counselors in all of the elementary schools prior to any of this happening. We had programs going. So you, you through your support, continue to, to fund programs. So what I'm saying is you certainly can put that statement in. That's always the idea that we have as a board. You, as a board, have been very supportive in the program. So feel free to put this statement in, it's up to you as a board, but that's the intent regardless. If we had, you know, without putting it in there.
Yeah, I think that it's pie in the sky thinking if you think that this funding is going to continue on with the district. I just don't think that it's feasible. And to end the plan as if the money's going to continue, our last thought would be irresponsible.
My suggestion would be don't put this statement in, but if we can continue, we can do it, that would be great.
Well, that's what the practice of the program has been. We've supported this, you know, for our board's consent for, for ways of conduct.
I mean, we certainly have to be responsible as far as fiscal and everything else. And we still have all our students to worry about. We can't predict what the future comes with life or how expensive this program is, or where the funds are going to come. But if we can do it, certainly we'll do it.
Right. So that being said, where are we here?
I started with one red and three green.
Yeah, so purple, orange, you know. So I think that where, from, from my perch, I think that where we're at is one red, right? The identify students who experience learning loss. I go over it on the block scheduling and. What was it? Oh, social and emotional learning. So where we have, we have one red and, I guess it's three red, right? The third one in red, one and three there. And then on the, and then the, I'll read it, the blocks here. Here, I'll read, I'll read, I'll read. Okay, so the first red one, the South Naples School District will identify students who experience learning loss because of COVID-19, develop and implement a plan that includes focus remediation, differentiation, instruction, staff offerings, honors, and advanced placement courses, and on. The second one is South Naples School District will continue to provide social, emotional learning support and educational programming for all students to address their overall well-being and mental health. And then those are the two, and they're under red. And then back to the previous page, South Naples School District will continue review of the effectiveness of block schedules in high school and then on from there. Will you make a motion that we make those into the district goal? Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Boe?
Yes.
Mrs. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Paramella?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakas?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Panisi?
Yes.
Mr. Susselberg?
Yes.
Mr. Cassio?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman? Yes. Thank you, everybody, asking great questions. I was, I enjoyed doing that, and I love that we do that. Moving along, curriculum and student activities to move. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Boe?
Yes.
Mrs. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Paramella?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakas?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Panisi?
Yes.
Mr. Susselberg?
Yes.
Mr. Cassio?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman? Yes. Personnel to move.
Back in, policy, no problem.
Oh, sorry, policy to move.
Back in.
Any discussion?
Discussion.
Slow.
On policy 1648.13, the school employees vaccination. For those employees that choose not to be vaccinated, will the board be paying for those tested, to be tested on a weekly basis? It doesn't really specify that?
Yes, the board is picking up the cost for the nasal swab for testing. That's going to continue until foreseeable future unless something changes for the governor, but we are, we are paying for that. The board is also allowing any, any faculty or staff member who wants to have an alternative test, but that would be at their own expense outside of the district and medical facility.
Okay, so we'll always wear pants, of course.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Boe?
Yes.
Mrs. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Paramella?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakas?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Panisi?
Yes.
Mr. Susselberg?
Yes.
Mr. Cassio?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman? Yes. Now moving along, personnel to move.
Back in.
Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Boe?
Yes.
Mrs. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Paramella?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakas?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Panisi?
Yes.
Mr. Susselberg?
Yes.
Mr. Cassio?
Yes, I'm staying on 12 seat one.
Mr. Chapman? Yes. Moving on to finance, we're on to 17. To move.
Back in.
Any discussion?
Discussion.
Mr. Boyle?
Okay, under finance, for the bills list, for the adjournments bills list, I'm abstaining on anything to do with myself and also any of the research projects that have gone, that have not been brought to the full board. Also, I'm abstaining on myself on page 15 for the county meeting. And I'm open number 16, the transfer of funds. Thank you to Alex Benazzi for sitting with me months ago to give me the paperwork and the discussions on the, on this debt service fund in full detail. Thank you. Also. The approval of the payment for the middle school accompaniment. I had asked, that's for the middle school. Is there still a chamber choir in the high school? And is that a stipend position? And is there still a chamber orchestra in the high school?
Mrs. Boyle, there is, there is actually no stipend for a, for a chamber orchestra position. The person who had been doing it and has since left the district, they were actually doing it voluntarily. So we don't have somebody to, to take that, that position. It's not something that's listed in the, in the CBA.
Okay, so there is nobody currently doing the chamber orchestra?
No, there's none.
And the chamber choir is still ongoing?
Correct. Our choirs are going, this was something that was outside of the course of a school day. It was something that was done voluntarily by that particular music teacher who lives in the district. So anything that's in our regular schedule is still happening, our chorus, our choir. But this particular chamber choir was a position that should say a position. It was, it was done out of, done out of, I guess, love of, of, of the crowd.
Okay. Hurst the pence, Mark. The students.
Mr. Panisi?
Where does that go to research for the review statement?
Right.
There are any specific we should tell, I accept that just because they are, they're maybe a part of the.
Good. All right, any other discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Boe?
Yes.
Mrs. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Paramella?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakas?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes, I'm abstaining on myself.
Mr. Panisi?
Yes.
Mr. Susselberg?
Yes.
Mr. Cassio?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman? Yes. Any public comments on any others? Seeing none, no more comments. Mrs. Miller?
I would also like to congratulate me and I, to tell we're being named committed students. This is quite an honor, a nation of perfect class. Also, congratulations to Barbara Habib on the retirement. And I want to thank her for all the years of service to the children in South Naples. My own children, my own daughters have her as their music teacher way back from the neighborhood of Kennedy School. She was also a big part in helping put on the fantastic Kennedy School riding show for many years. And I just want to, I hope that she, her healthy, enjoy it, and relax, and she certainly deserves it. Also, partnership for in Redford, New Jersey is running a middle school public service announcement video contest. It's a 30 second video with an original peer-to-peer message about the dangers of substance use and abuse storing your own middle school students. The deadline is September 31st. I mean, this is something that our, some of our middle school students can look into, you know, enter. I think there's a thousand dollar prize for whoever gets to have the public service now. Unless you would be also a teacher. And I just wanted to congratulate Tom Paramella and Devin Pender on getting reelected to the board ed. I look forward to continuing to work with my fellow board members. And I welcome Devin on as soon as, as our newest member of the board ed soon today. And I also want to thank Devin for his six years of service on the board ed for doing always what is right for the students in our district, for always thinking of them first. It's really commendable. I just want to wish everybody a safe, enjoyable, and have a nice year.
Thanks, Miller. Mr. Giannakas?
I just want to reiterate what we said last week. Shout out to Mr. Wigan sitting in the audience out there on how great this cafeteria looks. It really, really looks fantastic. As I'm sitting here looking at it, I can, you know, I know the administration had a lot to do with it as well, but I know how hard you worked here. And I just want to say everyone was so fantastic, and it really does. Looking forward to seeing you complete the potential. And I want to wish everybody a happy, healthy, and safe Thanksgiving. Enjoy it, relax, have some nice family coming, have a great weekend.
Thank you, Mr. Giannakas. Any other other comments? Mr. Boyle?
Yes, congratulations to our boys' cross country team on your position. Also, there is NJSBA and Florida State Health Festival video request from the students. It's a documentary on your hometown. It's due by January 7th. I phoned up to Mayor Maleska, and she can pass that on. Thank you, we've done that for the past couple of years. Also, thank you to Mr. Willen, Mr. Wanda, and Mrs. Richfords for the wonderful Veterans Day ceremony honoring our veterans right from our hometown. Also, best wishes to our wrestling team as they advance. Barbara Habib, thank you for all your years of musical arts service, for your teachings, and for your performances that you work with the children on. You will truly be missed. You gave so much of yourself to this district. Also, there is an athletic booster club toy drive that we've had for many years. It goes through Summer 17th, unwrap new toys, also possible gift cards for the older, older youth so that they would be able to receive some of the holiday spirits. Thank you.
Any other board other comments? At this time, the board is going to go into executive session, the executive session to discuss attorney client privilege and personnel. We'll be back in 20 to 30 minutes, and how actually we take. Any other motion to move?
Back in.
On paper, we will move. Roll call, please. Mr. Boe?
Here.
Mrs. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Paramella?
Here.
Mr. Giannakas?
Here.
Mrs. Willen?
Here.
Mr. Panisi?
Yes.
Mr. Susselberg?
Yes.
Mr. Cassio?
Here.
Mr. Chapman?
Here.
Any motion for adjournment? To move. Full paper. Any other votes? Any adjournment? Thank you.